...handle any of their housing if they want to apply for a CDBG or a chip. Things like that. That's their sole responsibility. Now, y'all aren't... What I gathered, y'all aren't necessarily interested in that. That signing, that service delivery strategy doesn't mandate that you have to be interested in that. So, it just says if you are, then you gotta do it within the incorporated limits. So, hopefully by the end of this week, I'll get some resolution on if anybody wants to meet other than Mary Trot. I'm sure we would all like to sit down with Mary Trot though, if it was just two of us. If that doesn't come together, then like I said, I'll just prepare the paperwork. It's Form Four, and Form One, Two, Four, and that's it. And I think that we submit the land use stuff again that says we follow our ordinance, they follow their land use, et cetera, et cetera. There's no grammatic abilities. It's things that have been checked off on for, since I've been involved pretty much over the last twenty years in rural communities. Nobody seemed real interested in revisiting, you know, going back through the process completely again. So, it works, it's quick and it's fast, and I'll update Randy and Nancy, you know, by the end of the week on that. As far as the majority of tonight's meeting, I was gonna just go over the future development maps and, like I said, once again, show you where we at and stuff. The smaller maps here, you have the rural village area boundaries. You know, not hard scale, you really can't see the boundaries in some cases where we put commercial code, I mean, commercial nodes, within those village areas. On the big map, the blue line's so big, you can't even see the, you can't see the outline of the commercial village areas. So, we blew those up and brought those in for you to look at. Some may be out of order, but the order I had is Catalina, was the first map, Ellersley the second map, and Pine Mountain Valley, the third map. All of the boundaries reflect, as best as I could, the, our discussions. For instance, the one in Catalina goes all the way down to Billy's, the old school, and then right behind that is a ball field. And so, I incorporated that. I don't know if that's public or private ball field, but, you know, that all fits into the rural village sort of. This is a little elongated, but obviously, due to the historical value and the commercial value, we really wanted to include that. Ellersley, it's, we truncated, if you look at the older versions that we had, we shortened them up quite nicely. It basically includes the area where the barbecue restaurant is, right there, where it comes in to Ellersley and the, he sells storage buildings. It also includes the former location of the Chinese restaurant. I found one area where it showed the vacant Chinese restaurant still there, and another one where it had been demolished. But it included that, it includes the commercial areas that already exist along eighty-five, and then we included well on either side, and then we included back up above the railroad area. Looked at that, I may truncate that a little bit, because that looks like it's impeding into the existing residential area, so I'm not quite sure if I'm... Trying to keep the residential, the suburban residential areas out of it, but I'll just have to check that. It includes the churches, the recreational facilities, and then down below us on the future development map, we have a green conservation area. And I'm not quite sure, when I looked it up on the air photo, it appeared to be maybe a house that sits way back up on that piece, but I didn't see anything unless it's in a permanent conservation. I didn't see anything there, like a ball field or anything like that.
Probably Ellersley Park.
Okay, alright.
Which is not ball fields.
Alright. Is that where they're putting that road in right now? Is that Ellersley Park?
Yeah.
It's working on it.
Yeah, right there off from coming into the road. Okay, that's Ellersley Park.
Yeah.
Alright. Do you mind if I include all of that in the rural village? I just wasn't quite sure whose it was. I didn't want to make anybody mad.
It's the counties.
I'll make you mad if I include that all in the rural village and village area? I mean, that really combines, you know, you've got your commercial down here, you've got your recreation facilities, all which would have, you know, met anything that was done, you know, a hundred years ago, as far as the activities being a lot closer and constituting a certain characteristic. But just let me know. And the last one is our new addition, Pine Mountain Valley, the previous two were in the last plan. And here again, we did a commercial node inside of it. And that's where you have, I don't know if it's the old pallet plant, there's a manufacturing facility of some sort there, it's not the chicken plant. And that's where you have the post office and a couple other commercial facilities. And then we included some, I included the ball fields over here in Pine Mountain Valley that have been there for years. And then the rest are vacant lots, vacant properties that, you know, if somebody wanted to do something to really match up with the styles of, you know, fifty, a hundred years ago, I guess, you know, then that would be an area which is vacant land if it was ever purchased. That suggestion could be there, just because we outlined that area, so.
There's that section between Park Lane and Sogol Street, on the front end of that.
Okay.
That has the fire department between the house on it.
Okay.
So, ended at Park Lane.
Okay, so just ended at Park Lane?
If you address the fire department, it's Park Lane, it's on that street.
Okay, is it north of the Park Lane somewhere?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So, what do you think between Park Lane and Sogol?
Okay, it should be in, or should it should?
Eliminate that.
Eliminate that, okay.
Park Lane would be the valley.
Alright, so south side of Park Lane.
Yep.
To stop there.
Oh, that's the ball field.
And like I said, if y'all have any, y'all have any comments on those in sets? You know, really just, you know, Pine Mountain Valley has all the history, and you have the Roosevelt Baptist Church, I believe, and a bunch of other things. It has these unique characteristics, and it's a rural area, you know, most of the lots are, not all, but most of the lots out there, at least two acres plus. And so, the rural village category is to hopefully, to lay out a foundation that doesn't necessarily mean that it's mandated, doesn't mean that it's mandated, but to lay out these concepts that if somebody were to come in there, had they thought about going with this book? And that's it. And nothing, there's nothing that says you have to go for a certain type of book to meet that Roosevelt era, forties, fifties sort of time period. So, and the commercial node areas are also there again. These are the major intersections. This is where a lot of things come together, and so we identified that as this commercial node as well, based on the comments through the planning process. Let me get up. I need that one a little too big now. The majority of the map is not much different than what was done in 2014. During the process, 2014 map, the only place we had the commercial nodes were all along the interstate here, which, because if you can't do commercial there, not quite your work, you can do it. And along with this, eighteen's the only one that really had developed. It has the little gas station, but it's been made for quite some time. But some of this property in here is just purchased, so, you know, maybe that'll develop commercially as well, which it's always good to have those dollars. And then what we did, the smaller blue dots, and like I said, this, these are, we actually went on the area photo and found places where commercial development already exists. And if there was a vacant lot in between them, then we just included that vacant lot, you know, in that area. But, of course, two nineteen along the back orders, there's good traffic flow basically up to this point, and that's one of the ways we concentrated it was based on the traffic map we did and the suggestion of those that are in the development industry here. So, you know, we have one here at three fifteen, the next one, I can't read that road name, I think that might be Go Rock. And then the next one up here where Pat's Back Doors is, which is, you know, a really good restaurant, catfish restaurant on the front of the floor. That, we also extended the node a little bit here, like one oh three, that's Hunter's Pub, right in there. And I noticed this piece in here for sale, this piece is here for sale, and I think they're all for sale, those are commercial properties. We also added, this is a manufacturing PEB area, we went ahead and added that. I don't know if the sale of these properties were proposed sale, or sale signs, I should say, at this or any way related, but that's already on the zoning map, and so, you know, with the need for commercial and industrial development, thought we'd break that up a little bit. And of course, you have what you have up here in West Point. To keep on with the blue dots, which look like Smurf colors, these blue dots here, this is South of Go Way. Now, we did three individual dots covering existing businesses, commercial facilities. Some are vacant, and then some are vacant properties in between those as potential commercial areas, and obviously, it's a good spot because there is a lot there. And it's another one that since most of these businesses in here are at some sort of street junction, there are subdivision street junctions, you know, that come from these two developments. You have this road here, and right off this, where it comes in right here, you have a business. And then we went up twenty-seven. This is, this is where Highway three fifteen comes in to Catalina. And once again, we did a commercial node, because, you know, you've got the Dollar General, you've got the gas station here, you've got an old building here, you've got the old brick structure here, and then there's a, I'm not quite sure what that was, whether it was residential or commercial, it looks like it was residential structure. So, we included that, and then this dot, we didn't do the elongation here. This dot goes down to Billy's and the old school and the rent facility, and the other commercial. There's two others right up here, and that would catch you as well. And then here below Hamilton, this is two oh eight where it comes in. They just, it's outside city limits, if I'm not mistaken. They have the old Pawood Wood yard here, there's a church over here, and this corner right there, because there's good traffic coming here. And of course, once you, before you hit Hamilton, there's about six thousand vehicles a day run here. And then as you get up in here, it turns to seven and eight, where everything comes together. So, we added that. Of course, we have the commercial node three fifty-four there in Pine Mountain Valley. And all of these areas really just suggest, we really feel like these are great areas to do commercial development, which the county needs, as well as industrial development. So, why not mark some of the industrial spots in some of the other areas that are already here? Because before we did that, we tried to add more detail over this process. You'd really look at it and go, well, it's not all that much commercially or after, but there's a little bit more than it's a budget thing. Down here, we still have most of it add, and that maintains the two acre lot. Most of this is all rural residential still, that maintains the two acre lot, which a lot of people were concerned about. But what we did add here again is what I discussed earlier. These are the temporary conservation easements that property owners can buy and place on their property. And that helps them, from a tax standpoint, really works for people that are on larger tracks. And it also helps the county, because not everybody sells theirs. I mean, I know a couple of people, I know a couple of parcels that have this designation down in three fifteen area, sold here recently. And that's fine, but not everybody's looking to sell. I always use Linda as an example, her piece isn't on here, but she has, her and her husband had two hundred acre farm and, there's a P. vine. So, right in here is Linda's farm, and she has that conservation. And she's not planning on selling it anytime soon, you know, she likes the land, likes to be able to do stuff on it. And so, hopefully, and then here again, over the next four or five years, maybe John, since he's so interested in it, could help track when these parcels sell. And are they selling once every five years, or are they selling once every ten years? To give you a sense of possibly how long these temporary easements might be here. Because it's important, because since these are still, you know, timbered or, you know, combination field, timber, this is what gives you the rural feel in Harris County, you know, in these developed areas. And so, you know, after some discussion with the county and staff and others, you know, I felt it wouldn't be a bad idea to add that. They're there anyway, they're not going anywhere until somebody sells them. And so, we put it up there for everybody to look at. Y'all have any comments on the map, that sort of thing? But all in all, you know, there have been minimal changes, but there have been changes. And as the county reworks their zoning ordinances and things, you know, this gives you more of a general idea of what's going on as the county looks at their zoning map, which we digitized for them. And that allows them to drill down into the ditty grid anymore. And as they modify their ordinances, you know, they can use those ordinances to address things that are in the plan, if they so choose. But anyway, y'all have any questions, or, yes, ma'am?
When someone comes in looking for commercial property in one of your rural areas, because of the scale here, it's difficult. Can, is the county going to be able to call you and get like a printout of every scale?
We can blow it up just like we did.
So, the community development department?
Yeah, we have those blowups. And, you know, and as a matter of fact, I can do that, and we can have that one up, and they can look at it. And if it needs adjustments, you know, then we can adjust it. Thing is, you know, everything's done to scale, so what looks like we just captured just enough of what we want, when you blow it up, that scale expands, and it's like, no, I really didn't want that in here. So, anyway, but yeah, we can blow that up, so it'll have that general outline of, you know, where we think commercial mode of development. A node will just be, it's all together, commercial mode of development all, and of course, I haven't talked about the development that got approved way back in the mid, god, way back, it's not way back. Two thousand and six or seven, somewhere in that area, two thousand and five. You know, this is a mixed use development, and, or proposed, and so it has a commercial function to itself. You know, it's intent will be basically almost a self-contained development. You won't have to go outside to buy anything, because hopefully, there'll be enough commercial facilities in there where there's office or retail or what have you, where you won't have to get out on three fifteen. And I know through some of the meetings we've had earlier, that there's interest back in this area again from individuals, I don't know who. But, so that adds, that development alone, if it comes to fruition, it would take a lot of, it would take a lot of residential units. It would add commercial. It would minimize what traffic is coming out on three fifteen, which I know the traffic counts in this area right here, eighty-five and three fifteen. I mean, they're up there, I mean, eighty-five's, and this part's thirty-eight, I think about thirty-eight thousand, somewhere down in here. And here, you're, you get in here, it's several thousand, you know, on either side. So, you know, anything they can do to help keep some of that traffic in there. And then you get that office development, commercial development, and that all happens within a very concentrated area, and right off of a major interstate interchange. So, you know, overall, the two acre is still there. It's still the majority of the zoning map that you currently have, especially in these agricultural areas. Pretty much everything has that ag on, it has the minimum of two acres. Get down here, and just trying to provide some additional options for commercial facilities and things like that. And they can address, if they wanted to shrink the size of the commercial facility, of course, you've got to have consent. They want to shrink it or enlarge it, they have the chance to do that when they update their regulations. So, and they can address lot size.
Could I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Since you mentioned two acres, and I don't know the answer to this, but do we have the option to go back? I notice that we still have the two acres in the comp plan.
Yeah, we changed it, we had five, and then we had two acre, we did two acre amendment.
Two acre move.
Yeah, so I could go, somebody wants to do a lot that's ten acre thing.
Right, right, it's two acre amendment. If, do we have the option to go back and change this comp plan?
Yes.
We do?
What you have to do, you can always amend the comp plan.
Okay.
What you have to do, we have to just advertise it in the paper, that's all you gotta do, that you're gonna amend this section of the comp plan, or this section of the comp plan, or amend it the whole dang thing. But yes, you can do that. All you gotta do is advertise it, and you know, yes, ma'am, you can do that at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, any, any comments?
What is the difference in the ag and the developing, this is our, development? Because I notice that we're on a farm, but we are in the developing suburban. If someone wanted to come in and develop a subdivision next to us, would it be approved in that area or in an empty area?
It would just have to, well, the suburban development is exactly that, I mean, which is all down through here. The yellow areas, if I'm not, yeah, the suburban area, the established residential, or basically all the existing subdivisions are exceptions. The rural, the developing suburban area, rural residential, you know, the minimum lot size is two acres, just like the ag, the minimum's two acres. So, to answer your question, the tone in agriculture discusses more conservation, larger lots, doesn't mandate larger lots, but it discusses larger areas, more conservation, you know, the maintenance of more agricultural areas than the suburban, than the suburban area built out description. So, you get two different descriptions as to type of development that you would like to see in these areas.
So, do we need to, we're listening to amendment, like our farm can be in agricultural, except the development suburban?
Well, what do you zone down?
Development suburban.
No, no, I mean, as far as your zoning classes. Self-agricultural, and if you, yes, if you, if there are amendments that come up, I'm not quite sure how big your farm is, but if there are amendments, or if you can show us where your farm is, I can move that line. You might not have to ask for amendment, but that would be up to you, that'd be up to you all, so.
But the thing about it is, if somebody wanted to subdivide a hundred acres next to their farm, they would go through the same process that somebody in the agriculture would. As long as they followed those rules and regulations that are in the county code or the subdivision, it could be approved, just as it could be in agriculture, so it really makes no difference.
So, it really doesn't make any difference, other than, what this plan is saying is that in the next twenty years, it's anticipated that most of the residential growth's gonna be in our area from that line. And that's, if we, I like the fact that we have the conservation areas listed on here, because it does help us say, look, all these folks around this area have this land in conservation. They don't really want it developed. You've seen the concentration of conservation here, and I just think that's an important addition to this map. So, it doesn't look like it's just land sitting out there waiting to be developed.
And let me tell you what I really love about them all. I was surprised that, you know, there wasn't more of the conservation areas up here on Walberry Creek. But when you get up here in the mid-wards, which is, might be a little bit more important down through here, but you see there's all this confirmation, this is not in Walberry Creek, I think that's O'Shatchee. I think O'Shatchee comes this way, Walberry Creek comes that way. So, you know, there's a real nice concentration here to go along with the state buffering required, you know, off of those, to try to help protect them. And you know what? If ninety percent of these easements stay in here for another ten years? That's a good thing. I mean, that's, it's ten years that the county can go back and either revisit some things to look maybe at some more permanent type of situations. And so, I just, I don't know, I just think it was a good idea to have. They're there anyway, and like I said, they're not going anywhere until somebody steps in. Now, let's get on to the work program stuff, because. Yeah, I told everybody at the office, I couldn't, I couldn't get any help tonight. And of course, I don't know if they can have more at the office, but it's fresh on the line. Alright, as you go on through, and like I said earlier, it's hard to see with glasses on. The, we start out with community facilities, and the first several items, well, we do have the airport scruples in there. First several items are just carryover from your last, from your community, from the 2014 to 2018 document. If it has postponed or currently underway, we carry those items over. Where you see the different type, that is all from the meeting I worked with Nancy and Randy on, and it's a really, it's a really good exhaustive list of all the work, you know, that the department heads think they need to get done. Of course, there's, that's a lot. I don't, I don't think y'all are gonna be able to accomplish all that in five years. If you could, that would be great.
I ran the numbers, and I'm sure the others did too, there's twenty, thirty, and forty million dollars.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that might take, that might take a few years.
That might be just a little, I mean, there's some great ideas in here.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
Some of it costs us some debt to the county, which concerns me. And then some of these are, you know, as I say, there's some, there's some really great ideas, but there's some in here that may be a little ambitious for Harris County, in my opinion.
Would you like to go down through each one of these items, one by one?
I would like to do it. That's fine, maybe go to have John like that.
And...
Why don't you, you wanna start by identifying those that you think you need to, those you'd go to one of our offices? See if we have consensus to do that?
You wanna go first?
No, I'm just gonna ask this question. These are things that we keep, it doesn't mean we're gonna do them. Some of this stuff, I'm assuming, we should have in there in case there's a grant or something comes up. I do agree with Becky, I think some of this is, you know, we're stretching to get some of this, but, I'm not sure if we wanna take them out, or if we may wanna just tweak them, if that makes sense. I mean, I don't know. 'Cause I don't know if we wanna take them completely out, in case there is a grant down the road, somewhere we might be actually able to get a grant to do some of them.
What, um, we can keep them in here. One of the things the state of Georgia looks at, they'll look at, you don't get penalized for it. They'll look at what you accomplished and what you didn't accomplish within the five, within the five years.
From this list?
Yes, from this list. So that's why, you know, there's, there's, because here again, in, in twenty twenty-four, you all will all go back to making changes to that again, as well as updating what you accomplished, what you didn't accomplish. One of the things they, they, they suggest is, is that you prioritize what you really need to get done within the next five years. The other items, we keep them in the plan, and we just put them in the appendix, you know, under the title of, of, of future community work items. I, I don't know how we would end it, but it would just be, we're, we're not gonna do these long-term, what do they do, DOT? You have short-term list, the long-term list. Be long-time, long-term community work program items, Harris County. And, you know, and they're in there, and then if you go to amend the plan, and you wanna move one of those items up to this five-year period, or your five-year period, then you can do that.
Okay, so say we don't, say we don't amend the plan, say we keep everything as it is, and then they go back and look at what we've accomplished? And if we have not been able to accomplish, but maybe two or three items on the list, is that a red flag? Or is that, I don't wanna say penalize, 'cause that's not the right word.
No, they don't, they don't penalize you, but what if, if we sent, if we sent something up this long, just the work program, that they would, they'll write a comment back that says, you know, it's, it's a lengthy work program. They would probably suggest that you truncate it, you know, shorten it to what you feel like you can do in the next five years. Because they actually list this in the regulations, the other projects you can put in the appendices, the appendix, as, as long-term period projects.
Okay, and the other thing that I noticed was, we have a lot of new sploßed items in here, funded items in here, that we can't use because it hasn't been referenced. And so we have new sploßed items in here that we can't use current sploßed, so I might correct what I'm wrong. So, and that, because there has not been reference for those, for this sploß, or they, we just began in this sploß.
And it's got to be what you're gonna do, right?
On that.
Oh, okay, that's, yes, ma'am. So those we need to be put into the long-term?
I would think so, because we certainly can't.
And I'm a lawyer.
Yeah, Randy?
Uh, I would like to point out, as a member of the municipality, and that is, that is, in this program, I believe that is some figures for a, a future sploß. Is there not? That is, the, the county's warrant list has a double barrier attached to some of it.
It does?
It does, but it says new sploßed.
It says that would be not the one that we just passed.
Right, but we haven't, but that has not been discussed, as far as I know, the new sploß, because, because we just...
I would only go to make an observation. I believe there's several million dollars estimated in the, in the progress for the, for the future sploß. And as a, as a member of the municipality, it looks a little like jumping the gun.
Yes, I agree.
About millions of dollars already, the county has decided for itself. And then if even there are no more county projects, then only municipal projects, that's two of them have new sploß. And at some point, you know, the voters might say, no, we have...
Yes, exactly, correct, and that's our point.
And so that was the point I wanted to make.
Right, and I agree with you, I think it's jumping the gun, saying that it would be the, the new sploß. But I agree with you on that. There was, um, let's see. We had one under two. There was one, develop the county owner aggression facility, all the party of citizens to you.
What pays is that?
That would comp pay two fifty-one, half million dollars in twenty twenty-four, which is probably, it'd be more than half million dollars by then. You know, I mean, I don't know if there's either land available up there to the George final leave, so. I don't know if that's one that we should, that we should be concerned. I had that in mind, to meet you.
I did, did.
Yeah, yeah, if you don't care, that would be a lot to do.
I would, I mean, we have a lay three park out there, which I know is not county owned. We might be able to partner with them in, in situations that are trying to buy land. They have a play area, and they have all kinds of stuff out there, you know? And it's open to the public, yeah.
Now, and the one right under it, about building a new park in Southern Park.
Yeah, I don't, I had that.
Yeah, I had that, where and what, and right.
And right now, and right now, you know, we're having, we can't even get those with the park up.
That's done, that's just...
If they were done, I just, I don't think we need to put, to worry about another one until we can finally get that one. And we already have three other parks.
I had that mark, and that's, that's five million dollars. When I started looking at some of these figures, I'm thinking, you know, we don't really have a, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, we don't really have a good economic development plan to bring in other revenue other than property ownership. And if this is, say this is forty million dollars in the next five years, you're talking eighty dollars a year.
Those are two thousand.
So, and like I say, I think some of these are some great ideas, but, you know, we have, what, third, three thousand people in Harris County? We certainly don't have the typical, whatever, fifty thousand that's in Escobee County. And I think we have to be realistic, and that's where I live. I live in reality. And, but that's just my opinion.
Has any accommodation been made in this plan, and it's long, I haven't read it all, for new schools? And for the law enforcement, the fire department, EMS, I see for new EMS parts of the county? But has any accommodation been made for, to handle the growth, to...
Well, I think that there, there were some that were identified. Now, the schools separate in...
And is that confirmed?
Separate on that. I had, I had another one, create an emergency operations center, that's a hundred and fifty thousand. I'm not sure where, what type, and, I mean, is this just to be used in, say, in the storms? That we had the tornado ban? Is this a mobile facility? Is this a stationary facility? For a hundred and fifty thousand homes, I don't know.
What, what age are we looking at?
Fifty-two, yeah.
Um, that would be like taking the nine-one-one center's conference room in the rear there, and equipped it with computers and telephones, and some computer, some, you know, computer lines, and make it a dedicated emergency operations center. So if something happens, that would be the congregating point, and it would be all equipped with, you know, technology.
And Randy, if I could add to that, um, one of the things they mentioned during the last storm, where the center is now, and its location in the building, and you may have to correct me if I'm wrong. It's nothing between he or she, whoever's manning it, but ten wall, I mean, that'd be outside ten of that building. And so, there's not much protecting that individual who's operating that center as it currently exists, if it got hit. And so, you know, it's, it's more about losing that level of communication. So, I, I believe that was one of the comments by the EMA director.
Because when it tried to hit a couple of years ago, when, when it hit the nine-one-one center, there was nowhere to go. I think that they were down for a while. So this would be like a, a center where, with the nine-one-one center went down, for whatever reason, technical reasons, weather-related reasons, there would be a secondary place to, to go to, to answer nine-one-one's call.
I mean, that's, we have create an emergency operations center. If you go three down from that, it's construct a new nine-one-one's lung center. And then if you go down two from that, is create another backup nine-one-one center. So you're talking about building three different buildings.
Or they could be all combined into one, or basically a backup nine-one-one center.
Well, constructing the new nine-one-one center is six million dollars. The other two are a hundred and fifty thousand, or five hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand. If you combine it all in one, that's seven million bucks. And I'm not saying we don't need something, I'm just saying that, you know, the, the way it reads to me is, is like we're gonna build three different buildings.
No, I think the intent was to, basically for the nine-one-one center we have is very flimsy, open, it had windows in it, not a good location, small, it can't be expanded too well. Just remember some comments made, um...
Right, and right above where it says create a backup nine-one-one center, it says renovate the old nine-one-one EMS center.
And make, and make it solely EMS.
Right.
So make that, because EMS is always hurting for more space, so they need the whole area.
Okay.
So, it's that kind of thing.
I guess, was there any thought given to how this could be funded? I mean, we all have, we all have a pie in the sky list, we all have a list of what we would like to see, but the reality is, we all have so much revenue.
And this was simply a, a brainstorming session, you know, to...
It was a wish list.
It's, it's more of a brainstorming session to see what everybody kinda is looking at in the future for the board to simply consider and, and, and think about, that's all.
But if we submitted?
But it was never intended to be submitted in this form. It was, it was for the board's consideration to go over, think, think it through, think about it, and...
But we don't have time to do that.
Well, and, gi- given the list, and y'all haven't had that much time to look at it, I know we advertised this as the, you know, as the final meeting, but that's fine. Last night I advertised Waverly Hall's as the following meeting, final meeting, they didn't have one, so, so they couldn't transmit. But what we could do, uh, my end goal was to get all of these up and, and before the end of the meeting. So if, if you all wanted to schedule, or, or we could sit down with one of y'all or staff and prioritize these, and get you that priority list, or however you wanted to do it, you all comment on which ones you all think need to be priority, you know, based on need or what have you, and cost. Get us that list, get us those comments, and we could cobble together something that works within the next five years. And with the prices and everything else that you'll get to look at, that would just delay the transmittal to, you know, a call meeting prior to April thirtieth. If that's not doable, then we could do it at your first meeting in, in May. It just...
Well, it just, it concerns me.
Oh, yes.
Right, because property taxes, that's what we outrun, property taxes. And we have already said that we have, you know, our second largest, and I've said this before, our second largest resident group, are people sixty-five million. And most of those people are on fixed incomes.
Yes.
And in order to do this, we, there's only one option. Because we don't have that commercial, much commercial, we don't have that much retail, and this is not the first time I've said it. We don't, and we don't have a good plan for doing that. And we cannot keep, and I've said this before, we cannot keep doing things on, and finding those things on the back of the, you just won't work, no, no way. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but most everybody up here knows that's the way I feel.
Well, you know, one of the, you know, in, in your vision and goals that we developed was, you know, me, on, on the very front page of the plan, was, plan was, you know, maintaining a, a, I can't remember specifically how it reached. I guess I could read it, but kinda maintaining that frugal nature, which is, I don't know. Uh, you know, when it comes to the first kinds.
I don't see any problem with something that the folks said earlier, we can have a s- two lists. We can have a realistic list for the five years.
Yeah.
And we can prioritize that if, if we want, it doesn't have to be in stone, but circumstances gonna change. But I, I would hate to lose the thoughts and the processes for these other possibilities, which are by and large mostly great, uh, good ideas, but just put them as possible long-term items. So they're listed, they don't count against us because it's possible long-term items, but it, it has it there for us to look at five years from now when we do this again. If we don't want it, then, then we can stretch one out.
It appears to me that if we adopt that position, we will by and large settle the perception problem that is jumping the gun. If we adopt that.
On the sploß portion?
On the sploß, yeah. Yeah, because the sploß for the next six years is already set.
Hi, just gotta comment, you know, and you're right, this is, this is pie in the sky wish list. What was, less than two years ago, we just had a forty percent property tax increase, went up to a high bill, which, you know, based on what was based, it went up almost forty percent. And I don't think you can keep doing that, bro, I really don't.
I do, you know, as I say, I live in, um, but my girl's saying, hey, you guys are down, you guys are sitting on. So, uh, you know, and I just look at it as, would some of these things be great? And we'd love to have that new park in Southern County, we're out of there, and I'd love to have one. But in twenty twenty-four, I'm sure it won't cost more than five million dollars, I mean, we just, you know...
Well, the thing about it is, if we had, say, just wish list, not, you know, the other things not in here, we get a, a new county own park, a Atlantic Creek Park, if we do another park, we do all this, we still only got three people running the four parks we got now, you know? If we gonna add this stuff, then we gotta add more people. And the one thing I didn't see in here is anywhere where it says we gonna try to, uh, you know, I think Mr. Aaron said before, the, the longevity raises or step raises and those kind of, that's not a, a thing in here. And I also noticed where we're talking about the phone system, and it boggles my mind that everybody in this county doesn't have the same email address. And it boggles my mind that everybody in this county doesn't have the same email address. Now, you work for the school system, it all says the same thing at the end. And it has confidentiality notice. If you work for a county, it could be Yahoo, Gmail, Hotmail, wherever they all are.
But, you know, why though, don't you?
Well, we run out of the free stuff.
Well, because the county, which many years ago, got the free version of it. And we're growing so much, you know, we can't have a free version of anything anymore. We gotta get real and get a real program in place. So everybody can have that proper email account. Again, it's rural county and we need to start having basic functions.
Well, I agree with that. So if we're doing this with the wish list, that should have been in there, but it wasn't.
No, because it says the budget.
I mean, it was in.
The wish list for the next five years, I mean, the actual reality is what we have in the current S P L S. Those items that we already approved, the voters approved in the current S P L S, that hasn't even started until...
April 1st.
April 1st is started this month. Those things that the citizens have voted on...
Oh, to fund.
That we have six years to fund, those, that's your priority list. Now, there may be some other things that, some of these less expensive items that we can do through general fund, Randy, you can identify those things. And the rest of it would be in the long-term priorities.
Yes, put it in the appendix.
Those are the only things we can count on.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Well, that's a great idea, just what projects you have in the S P L S and what you can do with the general fund. All right, I have, would you all, are you all opposed to meeting, you know, schedule one more meeting to make sure that everybody has what this is, is gonna be in the plan? Y'all tell me what you want to do, I mean...
Well, I think we can get it in by the end of April, like we anticipated we'd do, so call me. We'll incorporate it on Thursday.
And that'll give us time to really digest it and finish. And there's not much left. I just need to put together the stakeholder stuff, the public participation. And that's just taking all the advertisements and documents that we have, and putting that in, and then going back through, Randy already said he's caught typos and stuff. Going back through, catching those, and the community work program and work with the Senate. So, there won't be any problem getting it up there. Go ahead.
I'm just saying, a call plant, a call meeting can be any day this week. Monday through Wednesday next week. And then Tuesday of the following, the thirtieth, we do last day. So you're looking at, you have six days.
Running on fast. So I can get the S P L S list from...
Maybe true.
Okay. All right, and then the general fund. I would assume we'll go from this list to pick what items would be appropriate for the general fund and costs, and then put that all together.
And then we can, that would be such a long list that we can...
Rick and I will whittle that.
Yeah.
Thanks.
My thanks on the schedule. There, well, yes, ma'am, there will be one scheduled for the nineteenth.
And you get it done by March.
It's gonna be on Friday. Is it the reason, gonna be for us to go through the list and we get our priorities? So it's on us, on him, for that.
We could roll that down by Friday.
I won't be here on Friday, but, um, I don't want to.
You won't be here. What about the twenty-second, Monday?
I won't.
On the twenty-second?
Well, we can roll it down and email everybody for, you know, the currents.
I won't be here on Friday. Twenty-second, I would, but twenty...
Twenty-second, okay with you, but not, not him.
Thirty-fourth or twenty-sixth probably is okay.
Twenty-fifth is for the...
Oh, that's right.
We just, headed to Savannah. Twenty-ninth, pull him back, but if you vote, we could do it that evening. I'll give you the exhaust.
Yeah. Well, I'm gonna make it to the...
You know, we gotta get a little more of a...
Twenty-nine. I'll make it work whenever y'all want. I'll make my...
That one, the first one. Eric will be the only one late on the twenty ninth, because he has a class which doesn't, it's not over until three o'clock on that day in Savannah.
The thirtieth, that's usually too late.
No, Greg's second is there, no?
No, thirtieth works, yeah.
Thirtieth works.
Then we would have to get it in, how soon will we get it in after the thirtieth?
Well, on the thirtieth, you know, everything should be whittled down and completely done. And then you would just, you would transmit that day, and we'll send it out the next day. So May first would be the day it goes out.
Fourth, or thirty? Okay. So, what about you, this, this Tuesday?
I think so. Honestly, it kind of depends on if we win on the twenty-third. If we win in the state playoffs, that's kind of where we are. But I think that we'd be okay.
Y'all will have the final list, basically, before then, any footpath. And if you can't...
It was input.
Right, yeah, I mean, my thing of thirtieth is just doing it.
Thirty, four-thirty, yeah. Yes, this, I see two, three, four, three.
And if we lose, four-thirty will be fine.
Well, I think they're not here.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
So April thirtieth, and four-thirty, here, okay. That will be on, all right. Any, any other questions I can get with Randy and everybody tomorrow?
There was one sentence in here, I have to find it, that was not completed.
I normally run them on, so I'm surprised with that.
There was, I have to find it, professional term, should have tabbed it.
And actually, the thirtieth will give me, because everybody's is finished. And the thirtieth, I mean, so the next seven, eight days, I can just sit here and concentrate on y'all's going through, making edits, typos.
Page thirty-three, the comp plan. And that's under implementation measures and strategies, number three.
Yes, ma'am.
This subdivision design incorporates a significant amount of open...
Well, space.
Yeah, it was the only thing that I, that I saw.
Randy said it'd be his list. Anything else? I mean, you can, if you see something, or you want, you know, you can just circle it and get it to Nancy, and then I'll come get it. You know, we can continue to go through it.
For tonight's meeting, will they authorize sending in pending the meeting on the thirtieth? Or do we have to advertise that one as well, or the final, final?
I would, I would re-advertise just for the final, final.
So that would be an open meeting?
Yes, yeah, there, yes. That's a great idea, about just use the S P L S.
I want to go back to something that Ms. Fuller asked about a little bit. If you drive down Harris Road in Ellisburg, from the end of where there are subdivisions, from that point, you have the landowners just about sitting in this room tonight. From that point to two oh eight.
Okay.
And they're all large farms.
Okay.
So you were saying, you could change that spot there to agriculture, which doesn't really make a difference if somebody wants to buy one of our farms and development, they have to, it's the same process. But it would identify that land use now.
I just need to...
And it's like, how, it's what, three miles?
If y'all could circle it, do you think you all could pinpoint pretty good where you live over there? I mean, it doesn't have a lot of road moves on it. But if you can circle it, what you would like to see, and that's what this means better, and I'll have a change it tomorrow.
Plus that whole land, that whole roadway is far until the south. And it does leave...
That whole thing down there is one color, but this little stoner bag in the middle of it?
Well, if you ride through there, that, that road right there does provide that rural...
They take out the sun, and this is, this is a long...
That's what I'm saying, it doesn't really make a difference, other than make us feel better.
So, like I said, if it makes them feel better, I don't mind changing it.
I don't, I mean, the rest of you play it, of course, but, I mean, you ride down Harris Road up to where the subdivisions begin, and that makes that whole area really beautiful. We'll look at it, I mean, the rest of you can say, no, that's crazy.
I still, if y'all want to mark it, just, I won't, I won't change it unless, you know, I get to go ahead from powers above. But you can mark it for me, and I'll have it, and if that's a change, we'll make it. Just mark it for me. And another thing, if y'all could do, I have a sign and sheet back there, here. Again, I talked about the public participation, I gotta put that together. Y'all just sign your names and put an email if you have it, you don't even have to do that. Just say, I have a record of who attended the meeting. And that'll help me out tremendously. Anything else, have any other questions?
Yeah, I want, I want to warn y'all about one thing. Make contingency plans, there's an election, national election coming up in less than two years. If we have a recession, you better take that into consideration. I'm just saying. A lot of people, if you talk this on, it's bad.
Well, I can, I can tell you, I can tell you this. When we colored up the county, somebody mapped it, to digitize it, you know, we looked at their maps, and they have A R, and that sort of thing. And we colored it, the agricultural. My, the brown color marker that I have, pencil, you know, when I was done coloring, all of us, it was about that long. So there's a lot of agricultural ads still as of in Harris County.
It's about the third.
Yeah, so it's...
According to the figures, I have, yeah, ag is about a third.
And I don't, I don't live here, but I live just on the inside, y'all. I don't have any problem with that at all, so. But yeah, if you can just circle that and sign, and like I said, I'll finish touching this up. And then we'll just go from there.
I got a few more things to say, is that reading this list, is, you know, it looks like it's about growing the bureaucracy. You know, a lot of us, you know, especially us, came out of private, private life, interested in growing government more and more and more, every year, every year, and every year. So, you know, you just need to think about it. And like this man said, recession is impacting, you know, so...
So it was gasoline, I hear, this cannon?
Yeah, yeah.
I run one and a half, yeah, we moved back to Florida one year.
Your biggest disasters fall on us out of the sky. Is if they never, if we ever saw them happen. World War II, the collapse in two thousand and six, all of them kind of fall out of the sky. And I take what you're talking about very seriously. Because the next real problems we have are going to fall out of the sky. And the establishment is going to wonder, but where did they come from? We had everything figured out, and how it was happening, it's happened time and time again. So, I don't know if there's any inoculation against that, except for trying to figure out the real, the real one.
Well, I can, I can tell you this in the discussion with Randy and Nancy and the department heads we had, it's never the intent to, you know, list all of this fondly. It's just a list to go through and then to prioritize. And as Susan said, you might use the existing approved S P L S list is a great way to start, because you know the funding's there. And then what you can handle through the general fund, you can schedule that through your budget over the next four years. So that's all doable, and the funds will be there. You know, the rest of it, it really was a good brainstorming session. I've never been in a meeting like that where all the department heads were there, and we said, you know, what, what projects do you need? And really, there's, you know, there's a good list here for the next twenty years to work off of. So, and that was the whole intent, is to, okay, this is what everybody's saying. And of course, and all the department heads, each got to hear each other talk about what they need. And maybe they're sitting there thinking, well, maybe mine's not a priority, because there seems to be more of a need. So, all in all, it is a good experience, and we knew that, you know, this list would have to always work within that five-year time limit. And that's not a lot of projects.
Did anybody have anything to do with it?
I just have one thing. Did you get my good sub?
There is no good sub.
I said my dad, you stay on time.
I'm through.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it, ma'am.
We appreciate you all coming.
Thank you all.
But infrastructure, like getting roads with lines on them, bridges that need to be done, and looking at areas in the county where we are not afforded county water. That needs to be looked at. On a rainy night, there's a lot of roads that you hope you don't run over there, there are mailboxes on the way to the house.
And we're in the process of striking now.
Yeah, we are. There's a lot of ways of that, thank you.
We are.
There's some over there. There's some that have been done.
Well, the state roads, like three fifteen and nine seventy, the questway and all that, you know, that's good, but the county roads themselves are what we needed to work.
Four, something right, four, something right has been done. Lower Blue Springs has been resurfaced and restripped.
In our district, getting roads, getting dry, getting lake roads, and a hacky...
That's on road.
Are about, are about to be done.
And it doesn't get all of them.
No.
But there's already, they're just going for, for the next, for next year's project. And I can agree with you on county water, because my grandparents, twenty-five or thirty years ago, paid in a little fee to get county water at our property, and we don't have it now. We got two wells, and we got a spring. And honestly, I'd rather bring spring water anyway, but still. I understand that.
Pass Mount Airy Road, and it keeps on keeping on, and there ain't nothing out there. Everybody on the south end of Austin Creek, on Mount Airy Road, is all on the well.
Yeah, they, this our property's on one sixteen, going toward shallow, and they don't have it south. I understand.
What's the criteria for water? No houses, no people to be served?
Well, I guess, I'm not sure.
There's a, there is a criteria of ownership, but it's the number of houses, how close you are to existing line.
That makes sense, but when I asked you about it, they said that they had checked people on Pierce Road, nobody wanted it. That wasn't true. Everybody out there says they would never check. So, that was just a lot.
I heard that came down Mount Airy, but I didn't get any notice of such thing.
No, that was just water work, I just wondered if there was a criteria.
That was about five years ago, back when, I don't know, Mr. Lawler was on the commission. But I never heard anything about it.
We gotta, we gotta figure out what we're gonna do to that bridge up through Mount Airy, too, through that lowland area.
The state's working on that for a state government.
It's gonna be expensive to do, but...
It's ongoing on that, but they will, they will still have that.
But part of that can be, I mean, yeah, we gotta run water lines through that way. It's got to be part of that bridge, I guess.
So, the water would come off of the south end of there, off of three fifteen, just to run up to that. Everybody on, on the north side of Austin Creek has county water, so. Just a thought.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.